Can't wait.
All together.
I had three inches up there.
Yeah, that's about two, three inches depending on where you were in town.
Yeah.
I told you I didn't know she was coming.
And that last storm, it depended where you were.
What did happen, I think it was the head inches of snow. I can't my plow trucks.
But today, it hasn't been much. It's the freezing, the freezing rain. The freezing rain would kill me. I mean, I'd spend more time messing with that than any of them. I'd rather do an inch more.
I'd rather have snow than not.
That's safer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't like it at all.
Not at all.
I think it takes a thought.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Is that a yep or no?
Yes, I do. I move that the minutes for the December thirtieth select board meeting be adopted as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
With a back, very commission. Move along.
Six oh one.
You're just gonna be here all day.
As reported to Ray, Brett Kelly did contact the insurance company about the scrape by the pickup truck over on Brownville Road. We get into them along with the estimate. There shouldn't be any issues with it. Damage is all that great, but it is what it is. So, I spoke to them and hoping from now on, you know, you're gonna put your vehicle in the roadway, put it on the other side because we get up the hill and we can't get down. So, hopefully that will.
We don't have any kind of parking, we don't have a parking van in the road.
We don't have anything that bans anybody from parking in the road.
Nothing bans anybody from anything. It's just common sense. If it's snowing, you get out of the road.
Some people won't learn any of that.
I think we should put a parking van.
Me too.
Other than that, one question that I have an employee that needs safety glasses and wants to know if he can use as part of his uniform allowance to buy him out of his safety glass, safety prescription glasses, I should say, out of his uniform allowance. And I said, as far as I'm concerned, as long as he doesn't go over his allowance.
You'd have to pay the difference.
Right, he'll just have to pay the difference.
Right.
As long as the board doesn't have a problem with that.
I don't see why not.
Okay. Alright. Other than that, I have a John Deere backhoe gonna finally show up tomorrow. Case hasn't been able to produce a backhoe for us to take a look at and see yet. They state basically took all the ones they had in stock. So, I told the guy, says if we're not making any decision on anything until we see have a chance to work at a back, look at your backhoe and see how it compares.
Yep.
So that's where we're at with that.
Wasn't that one considerably more money or are they willing to?
No, they're.
Okay.
The only difference between the, other than a couple of hundred dollars difference, the only difference is, and the guy said, he thinks he can do something with that. John Deere has an interest rate where Case has zero percent interest.
Mm-hmm.
I told him, I said, you know, my hands are kind of tied. I have to have zero percent interest.
Yep.
So, and that didn't seem to faze him, so maybe they can come to zero percent if they wanna get rid of the backhoe.
I was gonna say if they wanna sell it.
And he's willing to drop one off, so I'm guessing he could probably do something.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they wouldn't just let us have a backhoe for a week or two.
Exactly. Awesome. Awesome. Any questions, Brett? Last week, one of the questions that came up is how many employees do you have that you can call either full-time, part-time, or on-call?
I have my two full-time guys and I have two part-time guys that I've been using that I could call thankfully because Rick was out for almost fourteen days.
Yeah, how are his eyes?
Better.
Yeah.
I don't wanna drive with him, but better. Better. He squints a lot.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, during the daytime, he definitely, he's gonna wear glasses because the soap, everything's so bright. But he's getting coming along.
Alright, so that's, I think that was my answer, two full-time, two part-time. And do you have any that you have in an emergency that you could call if those individuals aren't available?
Stan Wallach said if we got into an emergency, he'd come in and help. Lee Merrill said the same, but I tried Lee a couple of times and I haven't been too successful getting ahold of him, but I mean, so far, I haven't, I haven't been short.
Okay.
That's a good one.
Okay. Alright.
And the two part-timers, they, and one of them can drive the big trucks and does a, he does a very good job up. I was pretty impressed, so. And he covered for Richard. He did a very good job, so that was really good to see because I'm kind of leery about who I couldn't be big trucks. So.
And are both part-time employees CDL certified?
Just one of them is.
Just one of them.
The other one is not.
Okay. And the other question that came up was the small truck. Is it outfitted with the plow in addition to carrying the sand? And what do you use it for?
If we, that care, we usually mainly use that for salting.
Uh-huh.
And once the salting is done, we'll, we use it for sanding. We use it on the smaller dirt roads because it's a lot easier to get in there than the big trucks. And on the ice storms, we're using that on the hills rather than the big trucks. Because the big trucks are really, chains aren't gonna help us much in an ice storm. They just give you more things to slide on.
They slide sideways.
Right. They just don't, they, the trucks are heavy to begin with. And the chains on ice, they just helps them slide. But the four-wheel drive one ton will just, well, it will be out of this town. The other thing is it can back itself up if we have to, if it's that drastic. So, that works out very well for us.
Those were some of the questions that were asked, and so I thought it would be good to ask you while you were here and get information directly from you instead of through me.
Now, even with the sand during that, with salt and sand, that is still, it does not require a CDL license, right? You're thrown all the way.
Instead of the twenty-six thousand pounds.
Right.
The part-time one that has the CDL, does he go in, would he get thrown into the pool for drug testing? Is that how, is that what requires drug testing is the CDL?
The CDL is the one that is, does require, and he would be, he still is, I'm sure he's still on the books somewhere.
Okay.
I mean, we never removed him.
Yep.
So.
And the two part-time, are they, are they like permanent part-time, both of them?
The one is, the other is not.
Okay.
The other one is strictly part-time.
So, the other one is a kind of a on-call, part-time?
Yeah, and he knows, I mean, I call him ahead of time if I know I'm gonna need him. You know, somebody like, somebody's out sick or somebody like Rick had the surgeries. You know, I, I call him ahead of time saying, hey, you know, I'm gonna need you if you're gonna be around. That's worked out well.
And he's the one that has the CDL?
Yes.
And the chains, the chains on the big trucks aren't good on the, I, I, I'm just.
They're not good on ice. Ice, ice. Once the roads are frozen and we can't dig into a road, if they have ice on them, they're just, they're.
They're not, the chains are not digging into them.
They're on the fence of which you got the chains.
Right, I mean, we have, you know, they all have nubs on them like this, but eventually they get worn down, but depending, we have some very steep roads in this town. They're, they're amazing that they were ever designed as roads, but they are. Some of them are not so bad, like High Street, you can get up High Street with chains, no problem. Because it's a gradual climb. Tower Road, that's a nightmare. Packard Road's a nightmare. Carroll, Carroll Hill is still a paved road, and that's a nightmare. There's just roads in this town, Holman Road is the same way, Bird Farm is the same way. It's very steep right from here. So, it, those are tough roads. And then there's days we can't get up Lovejoy Hill Road, and that's a paved road. So, but that's where the one-ton works out well. And it can creep itself up.
Rick.
I just want, there's been a lot of, I wanna get this right from you, Brad. What, what's been said here is that the trucks are off the road a lot. They're off the road a lot last year and they've been off the road several times this year. Is that not true, true? I'm talking like we've had ten, twelve times last year, is that?
No, there may have been four times last year.
And when we get them pulled out, I mean, who, how do we get them out of?
Most of the time, we use the backhoe unless it's precarious enough where we can't.
The thing about chains is I, I don't quite understand why, why chains don't work. I know chains are a pain in the ass for on trucks, but you know what, they're not that hard. I think about all the loggers I know use them, Brad, when they're going up and down the big icy hills and on ice road cruckers, when they're going up and down the hills, they're using them. I use them on my tractor. I just, I don't know.
Yeah, but you don't deal, you know, you look at your hill. Your hill is like this and it's what, thirty yards long?
Yeah, but I'm talking about McPherson Trucking, guys like that doing the trucking. They use chains.
And they don't want them in the, in the ice storms?
They don't. They're doing, they make a living doing that, Brad.
They're a little more crushed. They use their, their grader, their, their skid steers and stuff like that to come up and crush up the ice.
I don't care if you use them, as long as we're not off the road every five minutes and it costs us money.
We've been off the road twice this year.
If you feel like you, you don't need them and.
We've been off the road.
And it's not costing us money, then that's fine. But if we're not using them just because it's, well, we're putting them on, it's making us, I'd advise you to use them.
It isn't that at all.
And the other thing that was said was that we had two full-timers, a part-timer, and four calling people. That's not true.
That's not true.
Okay, that's what was said last week.
Yeah, somebody said, that's why she just clarified about.
That's what I, I, you know. I didn't think we did. I, I didn't know who they'd be, but.
He probably wishes he had four on calls.
What's that?
He probably wish he had four on-call people, but you could call.
No, because I don't know where to put them. You know, it's, I really don't. I don't have any trouble getting people to come in.
So, we've got two full-timers, a part-timer, and a calling guy.
Yes.
That's what I assumed.
That is exactly what we got.
Yeah.
Three if you include me. Three full-time if you include me.
You, Ricky, and Dustin.
Right.
And then two other guys?
We have, and Ryan Works, he's the permanent part-time guy. And Josh Lawrence is my calling guy. Josh is the one that bails me out if one of the other guys isn't available.
He's not a guy that comes in all the time on storms or something. The other thing I would ask, Brad, is, is how is like, this year, it doesn't seem like it's been as bad a year as last year.
No.
As far as storms and stuff.
Well, overtime is down.
That's what I was gonna ask.
My, right now, my budget's in very good shape.
Sanding should be in good shape, I mean, as far as the sand budget in overtime.
So far, so good.
Fingers crossed.
Alright, yeah.
But I can't.
Right, if we make it, if, if the next couple of months go like the last couple, this will be a very, I'll say well-keyed winter for the town budget-wise.
Don't say that very loud.
They're not on this table.
Every storm I push out to sea, I'm all for it.
Karen, go quick. So, which one does not have the CDL?
Ryan does not have a CDL.
Okay. I was just curious.
So, he can't drive the plow?
He can't drive the big plow trucks, no.
Then he can drive the smaller.
He drives the smaller.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Martha.
How's the camera situation?
That I don't know. Sandy, you, what about, have you had any?
I, when I go on it here, I haven't been able to get in into the, the thing and I haven't had time to stop and check it there. I just haven't had enough time. There's like so much going on right now.
Yeah. The sand seemed to be disappearing at an alarming rate down there.
No.
Well, the thing is, you don't need to watch the whole video. All you have to do is go in and make sure it's running.
Yeah, but she can't get in, is what she said.
What I, what I, what I would have to do is call the guys, call the, the people to come in and then we'd, we'd get another charge because they're coming in.
But I thought, I thought he came in and he was gonna repair it and fix it. Now, it was what, two months ago?
Yeah.
It worked for a while, didn't it?
The last time we had the, the theft, it was, the lens was greasy.
Right.
It was pointed to the ground.
Yep, correct.
And you couldn't see anything.
And after, after that, I, I was able to bring it up. It's just, the computers, hers and mine are both kind of connected and my, I don't use Internet Explorer on my computer. I use Chrome. And so, hers is the Internet Explorer. And when he set it up, he set up the garage as the homepage. And she didn't want it that way because she's the one that uses that, you know, the Internet Explorer. So, it's really what, what she wants for that, and it shouldn't have been illegal because I had the, the, you know, the login where you put it in and it would bring up the login thing, but.
So, evidently, it's not top priority until we have what, three gaps. And why doesn't she, really?
I don't know.
Really?
Because I mean, she's.
You know, that's our tap tan. That, you're supposed to be looking out for the citizens, not for, for how you feel that day.
Yeah, but she, she's got, you know, she, she works with the state, she works with, she's got everything that, you know, set up on her homepage. So, if the Internet Explorer is changed to the homepage of the garage, that's not really efficient for her, and unfortunately, the, the website that, that, the garage has to be on Internet Explorer.
That's an easy fact. You can come in and put it on yours.
You don't have Internet Explorer?
I have Internet Explorer, but my Internet Explorer is hooked to her, her computer.
He can change it from the home to, to fix it very easily.
Well, I can't change. We'll add it to the list, but you're right, that's not the top.
What number is it on the list?
Probably down to fifteen.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, is it like, how many things have, are like?
I don't know.
Participation.
No, it's not.
Well, this is, you know, Carol, when we're getting things stolen and.
I'm, I'm sure Brad can tell if a large amount of sand gets taken.
But it doesn't help if you don't have a.
Okay, we're moving on. Brad, anything else?
Okay, so that was a waste of money, right?
Did you all get copies of the budget?
I've got it in my email, yes. I haven't had a chance to print it up. Oh, it is, we printed it up, thank you.
It's up.
Yes, we'll be here Wednesday. Alright.
Tuesday, next week, six.
Alright, good.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, memo from Debbie. If I get printed, there's I don't have a. We have a total of four hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars right now between checking and saving and the weekend deposit. CDRs have not been touched and are included in that total. We received three hundred seventy-six thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars in tax revenue as of today. Tax bills are printed and they're working on mailing them out. They faxed several of them out per request received. Okay, we have papers signed. Alright, so what do we have to sign? Assessor certification of assessments. Oh, yeah. Do we need a motion to sign that? Probably. Maybe this is what I was thinking about the motion for the, when I said we had to have a motion to do the mail-in. Maybe this is what I was thinking about. Alright, so I'm gonna need a motion to, let me see, send it out. Here. I move that the certificate of commitment for the fiscal tax year seven-one, two thousand nineteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, in the amount of two million, four hundred, two, are you still with me? Two million, four hundred seventy-nine thousand, five hundred six dollars and forty-five cents be given to the tax collector and approved by the select board. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Do you want me to go ahead and sign? Alright, school board, vote tomorrow. Nothing from the fire chief. Alright, Sandy. Created the domain name and website. Hold off, we're on hold with the website until we can figure out the money piece.
I have, I have the account all set up.
Yeah.
And as soon as you make a decision on what you wanna do to go forward, then, you know.
And Martin Luther King Day is a Monday, not a warrant week. We're gonna still meet. If we meet, I think it should be a budget meeting.
It's not a holiday for town meeting.
No. No, but I was gonna say, because we don't have much going on right now, other than budget, I was gonna suggest that non-warrant weeks, we do budget meetings on Mondays so that we're not coming in on Wednesdays. Yeah. So, we can still meet, but I prefer to have it as a budget workshop.
January twentieth, we're gonna make that a budget meeting?
Yeah. I don't know about you, but I get sick of meeting all the time.
Same time, I'm like.
I think six o'clock is good. That way, everybody has time to get out of work. So, Sandy, can you post that in the, at the board's office that the twentieth is gonna be a budget workshop and not a selectman's meeting?
And drops the twentieth.
For right now?
Yeah.
Leanne Sally, how to proceed? What does that mean?
That means.
That I saw you do that?
She called, she called and she wanted to see, because right now, she doesn't have a contract.
Right.
So, she, she didn't know, you know, how to proceed, what the, the things that needed to be done for two thousand nineteen, because everything that she had done was from, you know, June back.
Correct.
So, from July forward, the work that's being done.
Well, it's odd she called you because I had sent her an email asking her to send me a copy of a sample copy from a town that she does business with, with, of a contract, so that I could see what they did.
Yeah, you zapped her? Because she asked me like.
She didn't reply to my emails. Maybe she didn't get it.
Oh, okay.
Maybe.
I wanna make a motion that we continue to utilize the services of Sally, Bubley, and Sally Assessor for maintenance purposes and negotiate the contract through June thirtieth.
I'll second that. All in favor? Can you get ahold of Leanne then and ask her to send email a copy, a sample of the contract she has with other towns? So, we have something to look at. Alright, annual control. Sent the annual, annual control survey to Ronnie Sue and asked to have it filled out and turned back to me. Pedro Moore is planning board, nothing. I told you to be a fast one tonight. Homestead and veteran applications. Is this a new one or one of the ones that we asked that we?
It's a new one. I had called her and asked about the homestead and that we had gotten, and I do have the list of the, the names of the people that we didn't have for homestead. They are coming in. The, the application forms that I had sent out are coming back and it's just for, for our filing purposes and, um, Leanne had asked her husband, Joe, and Joe said that he doesn't think that they'll, that would be a problem with the state at all, so.
What does that mean?
The, 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 the homestead applications that we have aren't dated for, like.
For the year that they're supposed to affect.
Right.
And I don't know why we have to have. I don't think they have to appear on our, on our agenda or anything at all. I think those would just, wouldn't those just go in the files? Do we have a copy? Not with those dates on them. I, I, I'd like to talk with Joe about that tomorrow. Because they would be inconsistent with an abatement for a prior year with the date, with the date that they are dated.
Because it should be prior to April for.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, and as I said, if there's some documentation, either board minutes or a memorandum from the assessor, that's fine, but not all by themselves. Are you gonna be here most of the morning tomorrow? I'm, okay. Well, no, I was gonna try to stop in at some point. It's hard because I don't know exactly when they're gonna be here. I, I asked and apparently, or not apparently, Sandy has advised me that Joe's planning on being here around nine and Mike would be here later, ten to ten-thirty, so I can be here in the morning, but not before nine. Does anybody have any questions for Deb? I'm just here with all the titles. Yeah, you have had both titles, I think. We've already done your memo, so only one, no questions. Oh, wait.
I just had one question, maybe three about that, um, town books and reports.
That's not him.
That's our secretary.
Yeah. You're good, Deb. Go by the going good. Yeah, I'll listen next time you say first name.
I'm waiting for a couple of letters. I need one from, I meant to mention it when it was my turn. The, I need a letter from the select board. I need a letter from the finance committee.
Four.
A letter from the finance committee for the town report.
Gail should get that to you.
Yeah, she must know what it is, but I don't know.
Yeah, I, I'd ask.
Sandy, did you get the Oxford coming?
I haven't.
I know it, the non-free waste, I mean, not Oxford coming.
No.
Okay, she's supposed to be giving that to you now.
Okay, because I can, I can send them an email.
Well, she said she just, they have all the figures and she just numbered it by putting it. Usually, they do a cover letter. So, she said, I had talked to Brett Kelly the other time and she said that it would be okay with him in January, so. So, that means she'll probably give it to him at the next meeting.
Okay. And I have part of the. And I have part of the, the town report is the taxpayers' list, um, that requires putting in the exemptions that they get, whether it's homestead or veterans or both, um, they, and I have to do that individually, it's not something that I can program for you to do. There is a training on Wednesday that I'm gonna ask them if there's a way to do that, because I have to go through every single person and find if they have homestead or the veterans.
You shouldn't have to, it's in last year's book.
Right.
All exemptions are listed in last year's book, why do you have to go through it again? You should only have to do the new ones.
Okay, alright.
But you would think that'd be something in the program.
And it should print off, right on the list that Debbie gives us, it says whether there's an exemption or not.
For the, for the town?
Oh yeah, all exemptions should be listed. I, I can look with, I, I'll, I'm gonna be here tomorrow morning, why don't we look at it tomorrow morning, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I, I, I followed all the, the things and there wasn't a way that I could put the homestead in-
And you shouldn't have to.
It's right.
So we'll, we'll look at it tomorrow, okay? We'll make it as easy for you as possible. And we have two requests here, um, yeah, it says two requests. So we have the homestead property exemption request, and I'll pass that one down and I'm gonna look at the veterans one next.
On the homestead, they bought the property. The little pink slits that's at the top. Has the book in page, I researched the, at, um, at the registry to find the book in page to make sure that they were and they bought it on the twenty-fourth, so it won't be affected until next year.
Alright, so the service period is within the recognized period, so that's one of the ones that often knock people out, so that's okay, his discharge is also within a recognized period. I don't know why you checked the box. This is, if he was born on forty-ninth, and I know for a fact that he's seventy, why did you check that he's not sev-? Why did you check that he's not sixty-two old?
He's definitely sixty-two.
We still think he?
Cause he's likely to care about how old he is, yeah.
He was older than me, but I, I thought he passed away though.
I do too.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think so, cause it's-
Some dead people still vote.
Yeah, this looks like it's in order, but I'll pass it down to Larry, cause he's got a good eye for the veterans ones too.
Yeah, he used to live in the garbage, the public buildings here, alright.
And at the registry, they, um, they had it listed that he was a veteran.
I think it's not old, wait, but no, yeah, he's confused.
I do, he's always confused.
Talking about it, talking disability thing.
He's old.
Yeah, that's right.
Excuse me? Mark?
I'm there too.
Who is Carol, you said you were gonna talk to Joe, who's Joe?
Uh, what is his last name?
Sally.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, alright, you just-
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, Joe Sally and Mike Rogers.
From, they're both, they're both coming in from main revenue services to do the review, to determine whether or not the, um, work done by Shirley Bartlett, um, on the town revow is salvageable or whether or not, um, the, the recommendation is gonna be for the town to go out for a complete new revaluation. I get that right now?
You did.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion on the homestead. I guess I'll make a motion, make a motion that we approve the homestead property tax exemption for Mr. and Mrs. Murray Putnam.
I'll second that.
I think she needs the book and all that. Yeah, it's down there on the line.
How far are we at that? Map thirteen, lot seventy A, seventy slash seventy-one. And that would be for the next tax year, correct? Do you second that?
Next tax year? No, it's for this, well, yes, we're getting taxed now.
Right, so it'll be for starting July, put that one, yeah.
Alright, all in favor?
Who seconded?
Larry did.
Make a motion that we approve Murray Putnam's application recognition.
Second. All in favor? Is that me?
Yes, it is. Which one is he, World War, World War Two?
Neither, he's not World War, World War Two. He's, he's in the other, if you come down with the line, other approved.
So he didn't do it as the other.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's-
He's boss.
His eligibility comes under other.
Other, but what do I do here?
Oh, you don't have to check off a lot.
Okay, okay.
So his exemption is for the straight, with the fifteen thousand, and, and if you were checking off a lot, you'd be eligible for a higher exemption.
Yeah, I want to get fifty thousand exemption.
Yeah, totally disabled.
Totally, if they, if fifty thousand.
Okay, so now we have some debate now.
Map three, lot one.
Map, which one, back on the Murrays?
Yeah.
Murray Putnam, map thirteen, lot seventy A and seventy-one.
So one away to do that.
Okay, and we have an abatement for Joni Dahloff for two hundred sixty-two dollars and twenty-six cents. And that was requested by Lee and Sally.
I move, we, we, I move we approve the abatement, um, as identified by our assessor for Joni Dahloff, um, for the tax year of two thousand seventeen eighteen.
Yep. I'll second that. All in favor? Alright, Tammy, you got anything?
Nope.
Larry? No? Carol?
I do.
That's good.
There was a lot of traffic this week around whether or not the board, um, was within its, um, jurisdictional authorization to offer Ryan Glover a contract in lieu of hiring him as the town CEO. And because of that, I did not write a contract because I want input from the board. I feel very strongly, having read all of the information, including the two thousand twenty information that the IRS has put out, under publication fifteen A, Employer Supplemental Tax Guide, that, um, the town is well within, um, its authority to designate him as an independent contractor. It's, um, I was a little uncomfortable at first, because it's been ten years since I worked for the Department of Labor in, um, part of my responsibility was to determine whether or not employers, uh, whether, whether individuals were independent contractors or workers. So I wanted to be clear that the laws hadn't changed since two thousand and ten. If you look at the information Debbie sent, it, uh, again says that, um, the employers, including municipal employers, um, it, that it's advisable, there is no statutory requirement. If you look at the MMA advisory that was requested subsequent to that, again, it was, well, it might be a good idea, you know, you don't wanna get in trouble if you don't have to. Well, here's the deal. The independent contractor, what determines an independent contractor, and, and this is verbatim, the general rule is an individual is an independent contractor if you, the person for whom the services are performed, have a right to control and direct the result of the work and not the means and the methods accomplishing the result, and that is us. We hire a CEO, we hand over the permit, and that's it. And the individual goes out and does the site evaluation, they provide their own transportation, they do it at a time and date of their choosing, they provide all their own tools in doing it. We do not control and prescribe how that is done. Therefore, we are not an employer. We can choose to be if we want to be, but it is not statutorily required. If we decide as a board that we're going to change our position from last week and hire, uh, Mr. Glover, then there has to be a different met, there has to be a different motion and because we said specifically that we would pay him three hundred and fifty dollars stipend to do the work. So I'm putting it forward to the board and asking for, um, direction. Does this board want to continue to identify Mr. Glover, our, our CEO, part-time? Understanding he works full-time for, um, um, a for-profit company, plus he works as an independent for the Towne Dick's Fields. He's an independent contractor. And I, I, and I am very, um, I suppose, appreciative, I was frustrated at first, but very appreciative of the fact that our clerk brought to our attention a potential conflict of interest so that we could, um, examine the statutory requirements and to obtain additional input. However, having done that at this point, I feel very comfortable that the board is in the right to offer a contract in lieu of hiring this individual. Having said that, now it's up to the board for further discussion and debate. I prefer leaving him as a contractor, he's an independent contractor.
That's what I, yeah, when he decided last week, I think it's fine, I mean, I can't see where he'll get in trouble. He'll get a ten ninety-nine at the end of the year. And he can go from there, and he, he saves responsibility by last, so...
I agree. Yeah?
I have, just listening to all of that and seeing everything going back and forth, I have been kinda trying to figure out where, where, you know, really we stand, obviously, we don't wanna do anything that's gonna get us in trouble with the IRS.
Right.
You know, um, because I was gonna ask as well, in some of that information that was sent back and forth, it also said the municipal officers, so, you know, the clarification on that as well. But, I mean, it's pretty clear right there, that.
You know, I'd like to see, I think you bring up a valid point, and I think as we move into the budget discussions, we need to look at every single position and how we currently, um, define our roles for tax purposes. Because right now, you know, I mean, if we get ten ninety-nines and we get W two forms, we need to look at the law, we need to look at how um, the law is, um, what the oversight is, cause that's really it. But it's the control and the prescription of responsibilities, that is the key, and those are the two terms. They're used by the Department of Labor, they're used by workers' comp, and they're used by IRS. So we need to look at that as we go forward.
And he does have the control when he wants to do it and you, and that, so, yeah, so I'm comfortable with reading that.
And also, he, he works for multiple entities, which is another criteria that they look at, or another factor that they look at. I say leave it alone. Alright, so I'll go ahead and draft the contract and, um, present it to the board for, for further consideration and signature at next week's meeting. Alright, I have, um, I actually have something from, I'll go ahead.
I just wanna ask, is there gonna be a clause in there, is there gonna be a problem, say, he's not doing the work to himself? Actually, I mean, you wanna get rid of him, and that could break the contract in the middle.
He's on a month-by-month contract, so...
Is there a clause in there?
I haven't written it, I haven't written it, but that's a valid point.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, now I have something, but I have something for you. I need you to, if you have it, um, we have to have an ordinance for the, our committees, and we've gone back to nineteen seventy-five and when the finance committee was first established. There's nothing, but we have no ordinance. So I need to know when the vote took place to establish fifteen people in that, do you remember that?
Oh, it would be in the, it would be in the books.
Sandy has gone through, I just, we can't find a vote.
I know, but we have a lot of hip org disappear. And I do know, as long as I can remember, I mean, I do remember when there was three board, and I do remember that there was a vote for that.
Was it a public vote, or was it a vote, vote just among the selectmen?
I reme- I wanna say public because I remember there was controversy then. There was a lot of controversy at the time going on, should we go from five, three to five and...
Are you talking about select board or finance committee?
Are you talking about finance?
I'm talking about finance with the fifteen.
Oh, I don't know, the, the select board, I know that there was a vote on that.
But you don't know about the finance committee?
Nope, as long as I know, the last ten years, it's been fifteen.
But you don't know what, where-
I don't know what-
How that, how that happened, okay.
Yeah, we couldn't find it either.
I figured you'd know.
I just know way back when others were on it, they said there were fifteen, whether all fifteen showed up, I doubt it, but...
Yeah.
I think they were having problems, many people to show up and then...
So you think that's what happened?
Oh, it kept adding on, whether it's something voted on now or not, you're gonna have to look back at all the minutes.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
We'd had three, three different people, like, and we can't find anything.
Nothing matching it at all, that's why I thought maybe you have an idea.
Minutes is gonna be pretty detailed.
Yeah, that's why I thought maybe you'd know.
I'll look back, what I have, I mean, till two thousand, oh, seven or eight, I have all the minutes for it, but...
Yeah, see if you just fought something.
You're okay with the contract? I feel like I'm dropped.
Yeah.
Alright, I've got one more thing, as we did the slides, so I've got minutes, shoot. We have, what in heck is this?
She do minutes of our, um, special town meeting?
No, she did, yes.
She did them last night.
Did you?
Yeah. Yes, you can.
Alright, everybody would like to take a look at them while we go into public participation?
Before you do that, I do have one more.
Okay.
I had presented early on after I had attended a main municipal association workshop, a draft ordinance prohibiting marijuana and all marijuana products in this town. And you had said to me, you didn't know if that's how the town wanted to move forward or not. If we're going to potentially have an ordinance for a budget committee, I think that, I think that the board should also have an ordinance either saying, presenting to the citizens, no, no, we don't want- presenting to the citizens, "No, no, we don't wanna have it," or "Maybe we wanna have sales, but we don't wanna have all that other stinky stuff that goes with it." Um, retail, you know...
We can have retail sales, but no stinky stuff.
Um, I, I, I don't know, I mean, that's hanging there. The ordinance, I thought, was fairly well presented. Wha- what do you want me to do with it? Do you want me to stick it in a drawer and then when I'm gone, you guys can decide? Which would be okay with me? Or do you want me to pull it out, dust it off and...
Pull it out, and we'll look at it and I, I guess...
Yeah, I mean, we can put it out to vote.
I, I think that we should have something out to vote, whether it's, um, even if it's the one that I drafted, which is nothing, no retail, no nothing. Um, and then, and then the voters can come back and they can say, "Yeah, that's a good one," or "No, it's too restrictive," when they wouldn't say that. They would either vote it in or vote it out.
Yes, or no, yeah.
And then, and then we can decide how to proceed from there. Um, but I think that we need to have something.
I think we should too. 'Cause I know some other small towns, they're trying to get something done for the town meetings and stuff this year.
Yeah.
They want something in there. Not, they say if you get out of hand, then we won't have any control over anything.
No, that's not true.
That's what someone would say.
Okay, but that's not true. Because right now, the law, the law has written says that a municipality has to approve any marijuana-related activity in their town. The law prohibits all activity unless the town says no. The reason I feel that the Select Board should present the voters with an ordinance is because if we don't have an ordinance, then, um, an individual or corporation or whomever can go to the state and say, "I want an, I want a license for the town of Peru." And that would then force us to have, to have a special election to put an ordinance to deal with it. If we have an ordinance, then someone looking to start up a business is not likely to come into a town that's already had the voters say no. So, it's really insurance, even though the law says all activity, all related, all marijuana-related activities are prohibited unless the town says yes. There is that link that could force us in an untimely fashion to address it. And I'm saying, why be reactive when we can be proactive?
I agree.
All right, so I'll dust that out and see if I can find it.
Well, we'll see how the town people feel about it.
Yeah, that's all we're doing. And if they say, "Hey, maybe we get some money out of it." Right now, the law says, "No, you can't get any money out of it," but maybe in the future...
If it's a business, you could tax it as a business only, right? You could do that.
Yeah, but right now, we're not taxing any businesses.
Well, that's gonna change, yeah. It should. That's the way I feel about it.
Why can't you do that now?
Why can't we tax?
'Cause all, you can't just tax one type of business. If, you have to tax all businesses, whether it's, whether it's, um, Blaze, no. We don't have a different tax rate for businesses in this town.
Wouldn't that make sense to do that?
It would, but seventeen years ago, apparently, the, the board said no, didn't it?
Yeah, you should.
And that's something that would be addressed with it.
Rebound, yep.
Yep.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask that.
It can be.
How does that change? Is that simply a board vote?
Yes.
Yep.
Really? Does it even have to go out to the public? That's simply a board vote?
It's just like the, the, the board of select persons, 'cause we are the assessors. Remember, we were voted as the town's assessors, Gary. I know. A lot of things about what we do are, is scary. We could assign districts, tax districts, so that there's multiple tax rates in this town. Right now, there are only two tax rates, the pond and not the pond.
Yeah.
Well, that's simple. The pond and not the pond.
It's not fair, but...
Oh.
No, because if people live on, um, a paved road or they, they live on one oh eight or whatever, in a lot of towns, if they live on a primary thoroughfare, that's what it's identified as, the tax rate's higher than if they live on, um, a dirt road or a, well, a secondary road. And, or some districts are taxed higher if they have a beautiful view of the valley, um, in addition to, um, waterfront property. So, there's lots of different assessing tools and what's called districts that can be assigned. This town has never seen fit to do that. Just been the pond or not the pond.
And that could all be addressed in the reeval.
Yes.
The board chose to do that.
Yes.
I'd be careful about, like, like you mentioned, a view, you know? Like, a view is very, um, you know, right? That's an objective thing, you know? I, I can see businesses.
Yeah.
Is this that you're either a business or you're not and establish for the businesses?
No, I'm against view tax. I think that's...
Views and things, if you get too crazy, that I, I wouldn't be able to...
Yes.
Who says what's a nice view? You know, is a field a nice view? Is a mountain a nice view? Is a lake a nice view? You know, I don't know.
They have taxed people for view tax, and they've, they've not removed it because somebody put up a, you know, big garage in front of them, and blocked the view, you know?
But I would rule out, to, to, go back to the marijuana thing. I, I would not rule out in the town of Peru, uh, I wouldn't block any marijuana businesses from the town of Peru without thinking seriously about that.
Well, that was my concern.
I mean, there's a lot of money in marijuana, you know, and, and it's...
But it doesn't come back to the town.
Well, it, it, it does if you tax it, if you can change your way, you tax people, you tax businesses.
But we can't tax just a marijuana business. We'd have to tax Joe's business and we'd have to tax Blaze's.
We already are, yeah.
You've got a commercial.
Yeah.
Oh.
And he should...
I'm getting judged thirty-two thousand for an acre of land.
Huh?
Yeah. And it's not...
That's not why.
And one of the problems is Joe, is that it's not consistent. We look at Blaze's and we look at Winter Rosa and we look at Irish, let me, we don't have very many businesses in town. I can name them on ten fingers, that's it. And that's one of the reasons why the Select Board said, "No, it's not gonna make that much difference, we're not gonna do it." This is seventeen years ago, understand, we have not had a reeval and actually, we're going on eighteen years.
Oh, two thousand is twenty years.
Well...
Two thousand has done that.
He was looking at...
He has to chime in every once in a while.
You as a board can have an equalization, because you know that they, people on the water are way under taxed compared to the rest of us.
I, I'm not comfortable with that.
Linda said, "We're selling a house for that six hundred and fifty thousand and only paying nine hundred dollars in taxes."
Okay, hold on one second before we go any further. Were you, is that the only question you had?
Yeah, whether or not you wanted me to bring the ordinance forward for the board to reconsider.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, then I'm gonna make the motion, we go into public participation at six, oh...
Before we do that, are you gonna address that Homestead check from the state?
Oh. Oh, you skipped that one. Yeah, Homestead check from the state and act to return funds to main property taxpayers information. I was up the information.
It's just information, it's not a check.
It's just information.
It's just information about it. I, I have an extra copy if you want.
No, I mean, we're supposed to get a check.
Individuals that, that own property are supposed to get checks, but not from the town.
Not from the town.
Yeah, yeah, they're coming from the state.
They're coming from the state.
It's coming from the state.
Yeah, they got three hundred and ten thousand people that's ready to get checks.
Right.
Do they ask the town for any information on that or do they, they get their own information?
I don't know.
They haven't asked you for it? They never said anything?
They may have asked Debbie.
I think Debbie had to do something.
'Cause, uh, on that information on that, uh, Peru wasn't listed, but Debbie said it was because the assessor was late getting something in.
I don't know.
Something just went in for that last week, but we made, we made the cutoff for it. So, we might not have been on the list, but we should be upset because it had to be in by the thirty-first. And we did get that in by the thirty-first.
I was asking if the town had to give any information.
So, yes, Leanne sent something in.
Right.
So, something, yeah, something went, but I didn't even, in my head, put it in with this. But yeah, something did go in.
And I thought I was gonna be on the agenda tonight because I have a complaint, Sandy knew about it.
Oh, okay.
Um, and I have it right here.
Okay. Is this the one you called me about?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Um, oh, yeah, probably.
Well, no, we had you on it because I didn't know she had this. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. It hasn't been, it hasn't been addressed?
Well, verbally, like I, I wrote in here, he said in the spring it'd be taken care of.
Yep.
And I just wanna have it on file so that he will make sure that he does it.
Yep, okay, that's fine. All right, now I make a motion to go into public participations. I think seven o'clock. Okay.
I have a couple of questions. Uh, one online, John McCowen, if Ryan works as a subcontractor for the town, is he, I mean, is, like, what it was called?
He wouldn't be a subcontractor.
Independent contractor.
Same thing, right?
No.
Oh.
They're, they're categorized differently.
Okay.
Under the IRS rules.
It was, so if he's an independent contractor, is that how many falls in the town liability insurance or...
No, no, no.
If they ever get voided, so that... So, that makes sense to use him like that rather than the town is doing it.
Yes, that's right.
That's what I was...
It's one of the reasons why we had such a long executive session last week.
Oh, okay. We do the same thing with the taxes session too, right?
Yeah, and with, and, and I wanna take a look at the animal control officer too.
Yeah, yeah. Do the same thing, yeah.
And Rick Johnson, independent contractor, so that's why you pay our insurance.
The other question I had on, was on the website, um, what was the holdup on getting the, getting the website running or...
Running.
Is it, um...
Six hundred dollars, we don't have it in the budget.
Okay. Uh, when it does go online, could we, um, is there any way we could put, uh, information on our, informational sign up there? Is there a new, that makes sense to communicate?
Yeah, that would make sense, yeah.
People are... And, and what, I mean, can we start out small with the website, like, only have, like, the minutes to the meetings and stuff like that, and then just add things as you guys see fit or whoever?
And I know Sandy's the one designing it, so...
Um, that's pretty much what's gonna happen. It's, it's gonna, I, I found out what kind of website he had, um, and, and what we need to get what we had that we can pull resources from other places.
Yeah.
Um, but it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be slow, it's not gonna be, 'cause, 'cause I don't have a whole week to just set up the website.
Right.
You know? Um, I, I still have everything else that I have to do, um, like the town report. I mean, it seems simple and it, you'd think it was simple, but there's a lot of little things that you have to, you know, like, I'm, I'm waiting for letters from the state, um, you know, it's so...
Could you try not putting, like, Finance Committee meeting minutes on the website and Planning Board meeting minutes and, like, have a category for meeting minutes, for example?
Right.
I'd like to see that, but... Yeah, we had one until it, till it crapped out. Yeah, I know, it was, it was late that, last year, when we had one there, but...
And it'll be easier that, that you just click on that one place.
Yeah, instead of going three, four clicks to get out of it, right?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Um, another thing was, uh, Leanne Sally, when you guys were talking about continuation of her.
Oh.
What is it? I mean, I, I, I heard the discussion over the past few weeks about, you know, using her maybe possibly for the reevaluation. But what is it that we're using it for from this point until we decide whether we're gonna have a reevaluation?
Maintenance.
Maintenance.
It's, I don't know, I don't know.
But any building permit...
Maintenance is that what she has to look at is, that's right. Once, uh, a building permit is, um, approved, she has to go out and do a site visit to see what part of the building, it was earlier, we talked about, "Well, my house isn't finished yet." So, how much, uh, should that building be assessed in its unfinished status? Versus, is the building completed and should it be assessed for the full value? So, she has to look at every permit, whether it's shoreland or whether it's a non-shoreland permit. She also looks at all deeds that come in and is supposed to be looking at whether it's split, a transfer, whether or not the maps should be altered, and the maps have not been altered in five years. Um, she's looking at, but it, but it's, the deeds is really the biggest piece in terms of the transfers, the splits, um, whether or not it has to do with, uh, an individual passing and, uh, a, a bequeath, that kind of thing, of all of that kind of thing.
Normally does it though.
Our assessor.
But the assessor's supposed to...
The assessor's supposed to do that. That was part of what we paid Shirley Bartlett. She had two contracts, one was for maintenance and one was for the reeval.
Okay, so we, so, I, I'm just done about this. That's a region we voted for the...
We generally have an assessor on staff, you, all the time.
Some towns, bigger towns have one permanently every day, that's for full-time. We don't need that.
No, no.
She's, she's figuring maybe a day a month.
Yeah, okay.
Of coming in.
That's just normal, that's normal what we've done.
Correct, right. And she's not even positive it'll be a full day every month, once everything's caught up and she's rolling. So, she works for a bunch of different towns, so...
That'll make sense.
Yeah. And she's also streamlining things and setting up Excel sheets and, once she gets herself organized and everything, I, I think it won't be very time-consuming for her at all when she's caught up.
It'll be in the budget, obviously.
Yes, yeah. When we voted the money in for to pay her what we owe her, we, the part of what was in there was enough to pay her monthly.
Okay.
And, you know, assert up. How could I figure it? We figured up to eight hours a month until the new budget. So, we have enough to get through the rest of this year and then we'll budget for starting in July.
Yeah, makes sense to me, that would keep her fingers in, in town.
That's right, that's right. I mean, she did a lot of work for us in a short amount of time and did a heck of a job, so it'd be crazy to let her go.
And she only took us through April of...
She did really...
Nineteen, correct? So, so she's, now she has from April to now, anything that transpired in that timeframe.
Correct.
To, to get taken care of, because she didn't do that, trying to get the commitment done.
Right. Maybe, so we can commit taxes on time, actually.
That would be really nice.
That would be awesome. Karen?
So, are the tax cards done?
Tax cards.
You know, your, your card that you can look at?
No, they don't. That has to do with the reeval.
Right, that's a whole other thing, yeah.
That's called the map card. And the map card, yeah, and the map cards are part of the reeval. That's when we refer to a map and lot.
Yeah.
Those have not been revised. They were supposed to have been.
Yeah.
And pictures were supposed to have been taken.
Yeah.
But they haven't been.
As part of the pay for it, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So, we'll, we'll know tomorrow more about what's, if there's any, anything salvageable or not. I have a feeling probably not, but we'll see, we'll see what they say.
Um, my question is only 'cause I haven't been here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, why did we go to Ryan Glover? What happened to who we did have as CEO?
He got done, he took the full-time position somewhere else.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize he stepped away, I wasn't here.
Yeah.
Wish, wish he hadn't, bro.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He found a full-time job, so...
And it's, you were very quick. I mean, we sat for a long time, we had a CEO for quite a long time last time. So, we've been very lucky for Ryan to step in that quick.
That's why we went the way we did.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Okay.
I'm taking more shit with you.
No, we can't.
I know, we got a lot of...
A lot of public participation. All right, I'll second that. All in favor? Now do it.
Okay, I'm taking more shit with you.